Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember McCollum.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Twenty-six.
An ordinance approving a final plat for Quick Stop Gas Station, a one lot and one tract plat on point seven-six more or less acres located at the southeast to southwest corners of one-hundred-and-fifty-Fifth Street and North Scott Avenue in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present. Have a motion and a second. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this evening is a final plat for Quick Stop Gas Station, which includes a point-five-four acre lot at the southeast corner of one-hundred-and-fifty-fifth and North Scott and a point-two-two acre tract at the southwest corner of one-hundred-and-fifty-fifth and North Scott. Lot one is proposed to be redeveloped as a gas station and convenience store, which received Planning Commission approval on April twenty-eighth. The final plat includes the dedication of utility easements to accommodate existing utilities on both properties. It has been determined that the utility easement on tract A is wide enough to accommodate the existing water line on the west side of the property. The Planning Commission reviewed the final plat on April twenty-eighth and recommended approval. Staff also recommends approval with the one condition in the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead. Really? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two, motion approving the first reading of Bill twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
An ordinance approving an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the installation of roadside flashers for city operations.
Present. Motion and a second. You're up.
This is an ordinance that would approve us to be able to sign an agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission to install flashers basically down the street here at Cedar and Main Street. These would be what they call rapid flashers. So it would be basically a crosswalk sign like it's out there now with the arrow pointing down. It's just in between those two signs would be a rectangular rapid flasher. So you've seen the slow flashers, and as you drive around Kansas City, you've probably seen some communities that have these, and they just really rapidly quickly fire off. And so when you're driving down the road, someone, you can walk up to it, press the button, all of them will go off, and it will bring attention to you that you're going to cross the street. Now, it doesn't change the rules. It's not a hawk signal that goes red and tells you that you have to stop for them. So you still have to obey the rules of crossing the road, which means that you can't start entering a road unless you can actually cross the road safely. It just brings attention to you that someone is crossing the road. Happy to answer any questions. Oh, one key to this is that MoDOT changed their agreement, and in this agreement, they are going to maintain it once we install it. So all we have to do is install it, and since it's on their right of way, they now want to maintain the item. So we will not do any maintenance to the item. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
This is what Councilmember Powell started forever ago talking about, right?
No, forever ago, he wanted to get a radar speed limit sign. And so we actually, I spent better part of two years negotiating an agreement with them on a radar speed limit sign. We actually passed the ordinance allowing us to sign that agreement. We signed it, sent it back to them, and at that time, they then changed their policy, and they came up with a specific sign that they want us to use for a speed limit sign. It was a specific size, the size of the letters, of the numbers, and what all the verbiage could be. At that time, they came up with a sign, and it was unavailable from any manufacturer. So I wrote back to MoDOT, and we spent the next year asking where, just tell me where I can buy it from, what person, and I will use that sign. And then they basically said they've discontinued that program. And so you still see some of those up other places, and it's been a struggle. I'm gonna be honest with you. This has gone on for probably close to four years to try to get a sign put up, three years, three... And so this will be the sign that will be up there to notify people someone's crossing there.
And I'm thrilled for that because I get almost run down there on a regular basis. And is that something that, that the police will be aware of and know that it's a new signal and, and maybe could have some people out, you know, officers out there periodically just to say, look, you have to really slow down when these people are crossing the road?
Yeah, it's, it's to advise that someone's about to cross the road, so...
Okay. All right.
Go ahead.
I have two questions. There's one of these by my work. I work at Lake Forty-Eighth and Truce, and traffic can be kind of treacherous there. So we have one of these, and drivers don't always heed them. Thinking about this location and the curve of the road, would it make sense to also have a sign that says something like pedestrian crossing ahead? Like, do you couple it with like warning, you're gonna need to pay attention for pedestrians coming up?
So part of the problem with this location that's taken so long to get the exact location of the signs determined is that there's also railroad crossing at this location. So there are railroad advance signs there. They're in conflict with where advanced signing for a pedestrian would be. So because of that, they have, we have to have the railroad warning signs there. And so we cannot have the duplicate sign of having an advance, another advanced sign for the crosswalk. These signs, and as you've seen them, are very effective. They're very bright when you press that button. And so people should be able to see them easily coming around the corners and see them when they're flashing.
Okay. The second part I had was, hadn't we talked about changing our enforcement that if the light is flashing and there's an accident with a pedestrian, the driver would have increased liability, right? It was, if you're in the roadway and it's not safe, that's on the pedestrian. I thought we talked about...
We talked about having that conversation with police and see if we can update that part of our, of our code to essentially make that a requirement for when the flashing sign...
That'd be great, I think. Maybe help with the efficacy. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That was exactly where I was going. Just that I would like to see us make that update, whatever that entails, just to help. Yeah, I'm, I don't, I can't hear myself, so I don't...
If there's... Oh, 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 there we go. So I'll just repeat it. What I'd like to see is exactly what Councilmember Lawson was referring to is an update there, because I know we don't currently, this is my understanding, this is the first one we have in Belton. And so I'd like to see an update as appropriate.
We're currently researching what that would take to get that updated and approvals that would need to...
I'm, I'm really thrilled, Greg, that we're putting it there. I mean, really. And I know that Rob worked on it for, you know, just trying to get anything there for a long time, but I can tell you that they'll, they'll gun it if they see someone in the crosswalk there. So that is something that we, I mean...
Maybe they just gun it when they see you.
Well, maybe. That may be the case. But I mean, Kate and I have sprinted through that crossing a lot. So that would be something, if we could, if we could change the code ordinance or, you know, rather than a councilperson being run down like on the first day with the flashing light. So anyhow.
Just real quick, it wasn't a little red car, was it?
Go ahead.
Do you have any concerns with MoDOT doing the maintenance instead of us doing the maintenance on the sign? Is, are you worried about that at all?
Uh, there is always a concern with maintenance to it. There's, this is a, gonna be, should have a solar panel at the top, although with them, they may not let me do that. They may maybe put straight power to it. The question comes if someone hits it and knocks it down and how much damage did to it. I don't have a lot of luck getting things put back up in a reasonable time. That's why a lot of the signs around town, you'll see that we put them back up even on fifty-eight and different places like that. We do a lot of that work just to maintain what, I mean, it's what the public expects. And so we just go out of our way to do extra things. And so if it requires us to do something, we'll probably just do it.
All right. So that's my understanding then. You'll, if, if it, something goes wrong, we'll take it right.
I won't publicly acknowledge that, but...
Understood. Understood.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just as a reminder for the many viewers at home, one toe in the crosswalk, right, chief? And they must stop. So please adhere to that.
Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three, motion approving the first reading of Bill twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-eight.
An ordinance amending Chapter Seventeen Parks and Recreation of the Code of Ordinances, City of Belton, Missouri, to align the provisions contained therein with the Home Rule Charter of the City of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. We have before you, this bill is essentially an amendment of, of Chapter Seventeen of the Code of Ordinances. The reason this amendment is necessary is the code that is written that's being amended was written preceding the charter process and during the charter process, and then subsequently in the charter review process over the past, from two thousand nine, two thousand eighteen, there's been a change in the charter and how, and essentially the, the way it's laid out, laid out for parks. And what we're recommending for Chapter Seventeen is just to bring it into alignment with the charter. And so there's a redline version there that's, that's essentially outlining what those changes would be, and those changes would be consistent with what's in the charter in Article Nine, which is the Parks Port, portion of the charter. I'll stand for any questions.
Go ahead.
So just to be clear, this is not a change per se. I know technically it's a change, right? But it's not really a change. What it is, is a, a correction to make sure our, we're aligned, and it should have probably been something that happened previously, and we've caught it now, so we're making sure it's corrected.
Yeah, essentially, when there's a conflict between the charter and the Code of Ordinances, the charter has precedence because the charter is approved by the voters, and the code is approved by the council. And so that, that voter approval supersedes the council's authority to, to, to set code. And so, yeah, so this is essentially just, was overlooked whenever the charter went into effect, when the charter review process was finished. And so this is just essentially to bring that into alignment.
Some cleanup. I just wanted that to be clear. So, thank you.
Go ahead.
This might be a question for our city attorney. The use of the word members versus director, I, they're being used interchangeably, but a lot of the edits to member is going to director, but it's inconsistent.
Yeah, that again was just a straight, to be completely honest, to make sure that everything was exactly correct, I took Chapter Seventeen. Anytime that there was a provision that was longer than one line, where I couldn't exactly go like this, it was deleted, the charter was copied, and then the charter was pasted. So that could be some of the inconsistency, because there is inconsistency across the charter and the code regarding capitalization of letters as well. The charter capitalizes most of the time, city, city council, Parks and Recreation, director, member, stuff like that. Whereas in the code, we do not capitalize those things. So that could also be a reason for some of the changes and corrections. But in regards to member or director, member and director for the purpose of the charter and for this means the same thing.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Four, motion approving resolution twenty-twenty-five dash forty-three.
A resolution approving the purchase and installation of Honeywell Phoenix G2 Station Alerting System from U.S. Digital Designs for Fire Stations eighty-one and eighty-two in a not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars.
Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. You're up.
Good evening. We spoke about this at a work session a little while back. So just to follow back, this is an update and an upgrade to the system. It's, we currently have station alerting. This is an add, another component that's gonna add an automation to the dispatch so that when they type in the type of call and the address, the system's gonna automatically start notifying firefighters and go through the new alerting systems within the stations. So it did put it as the do-not-exceed, which is the total amount that we asked for in the budget originally, just because on these sorts of projects, we sometimes figure we might run into surprises in the old buildings that we didn't anticipate. There'll be a couple more things coming up in the next couple meetings that are gonna be needed to go along with this, a software agreement contract with, with the ESB and Central Square, who runs our computer-aided dispatching system so that it'll allow the softwares to talk to each other. And then we're gonna also enter in a MOU with South Metro Fire Protection District because they've already purchased all the equipment needed, including the gateways, which are the access points, which don't need to be duplicated. So we're gonna enter into an agreement with them to share that equipment so that it'll kind of save us both money into the future. Any questions? If you have them, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda one motion non-available to approve recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for not being taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from City Council. Councilmember Johnson.
We, I'm gonna mention that the Belton Main Street Coalition did receive the Community Empowerment Grant from Missouri Main Street, and we're working forward on that process. That will be a two-year training period that the grant will cover, and we're very excited about that and appreciate all the help that we received from city staff and from all the members of the board to make that happen, and for the other community members who participated in the meeting that we had with Missouri Main Street. So thank you, everybody.
Councilmember McCollum.
Um, okay. A couple things. This first one is, so, you know, one of the reasons, at least the running reasons, my family ended up moving here to Belton was they get that country living feel with the amenities and convenience of a big city, right? Well, this morning in Grandview, a bear, literally a black bear, was spotted. And yesterday in Overland Park, a black bear was spotted. So really bringing that country living feel here to Belton, or at least in the area. So just remember, if you do come across a bear, if you happen to look out your backyard and see one hanging out that you call nine-one-one, don't get ahold of MDC so we can make sure we follow the correct process there. And obviously, please, you know, stay away from them. And then I just want to bring up the Junior Craft Show took place last weekend, and I, I guess I wasn't sure completely what to expect, but it, I thought it went awesome. I think I was impressed by some of the things and the creativity from all the kids, and I just thought I, I wanted to highlight that for a second because it would just turn out to be a really cool event. So if it happens again, highly suggest everybody gets out there and, and checks it out if you didn't already. I have a couple updates from Parks tomorrow. If you haven't already noticed, the public input for the Parks Master Plan is taking place from five PM to eight PM. Did I get, five PM to eight PM. And so, you know, come out if you would like to learn more about the future plans for Parks. Farmers Market reminder, that occurs, that's going on every Thursday from here through the rest of the summer. We have the Kids Fishing Derby is this Saturday at Cleveland Lake. We have Kerry Nation Days, which this, I hopefully is not a surprise to anybody, but that's right around the corner, May thirtieth and thirty-first. And, and then a little further in the future, we have the Kids Fun Run will take place at Wallace Park on June fourteenth. So that is everything I got.
Um, I got the, there, we're doing the Artist in Mural Celebration for the mural that runs under, in the tunnel under I-49. So next Thursday, May twenty-second, come out. This mural's pretty cool looking. You can ask the artist why the train number doesn't match the train down here in downtown Main Street. I don't know why that is, but she will be there, and everybody come out and check it out next Thursday, May twenty-second at six PM.
Um, I would, yeah, I would just say congratulations to the Belton High School class of twenty-twenty-five, and especially to Lila Gardner and Jessica Roush, who are two students that helped kick off the Belton Youth Commission, which is gaining steam, and hopefully at the start of the next school year, we'll all hit the ground running with high school students that are curious about the city and, and getting involved, and we can help connect them to answers they seek. So thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Um, I enjoyed Cinco de Mayo on Main Street. It was a good time. Lots of people, great dancing, music. It was a good time.
I want to also mention the Belton Main Street Coalition and the fact that we won this Community Empowerment Grant. The city showed well. It showed really well, and thanks for staff for being involved in it. Now they're going to have two years to treat, teach old dogs new tricks, which will be, will be an interesting way to do it. So we're, we're very excited, and, and we've got, we've got people, we got places to come up, and you could come into meetings, and we'll start posting all that pretty soon, what we're gonna do. So thank you very much.
I know it's hard to believe, but I have nothing.
Write this date down. I have nothing either. So, City Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, you might, may have found at your seats at the dais the, the stack of cards, the MyBelton cards, just reminding residents to download the MyBelton app or go to our website and, and sign up to MyBelton. If you have any concerns, any issues, any questions, please, if you utilize that format, it allows us to track the response. So we can see how well our staff is responding and communicating throughout the process. And so it helps keep us accountable. And so you don't have to use it. If you want to call, and we'll, we'll still try to, to help you out. But if you use that, it helps us track the response a lot better. And so we've given each of you a stack of those cards, and if you need more, let us know. We've had quite a few entries in it since we've launched, and we, we, and to be frank, we haven't marketed it that heavily yet. And yeah, it's, it's getting some traction. Doggone.
Items for review and discussion. One, property and liability work comp insurance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Casey and I are gonna be presenting today information about the property, liability, work comp, and cybersecurity information that we were requested to review last year. So just a little background, for those of you who don't know, we were a founding member of Midwest Public Risk. That is who is our current vendor. And we do currently have those lines of coverage with them. In the past, we'd had health insurance with them as well. We don't any longer. But in February of last year, there were the two resolutions that are listed there. If you wanted to go back and look at them, to ask us to look at those lines of coverage. So I am the member representative for Midwest Public Risk, and Mike Eke with his background in risk management is on the board. And then just again for edification here, there are lines of coverage that are listed, property, liability, cyber are all under KC. Workers' compensation is under HR. So in the last year, even though we were approved in February to look at this, our renewal, we wouldn't have found out what that was until a little bit later. Renewal dates are July first. So we took the time to do a lot of different things. We worked with Brown and Brown, who was the vendor that was, the consultant that was helping us look at those lines. We ended up going and taking tours of facilities with vendors, reviewing coverage, due diligence review. Multiple carriers were requested to bid on all the lines of coverage. I think over thirty-five vendors were reviewed. And then we went and talked to Midwest Public Risk, who's the current vendor, to see what we were missing, talk about coverage, and really just to make sure that we had all lines of coverage reviewed with them. And then risk mitigation, within the last year, we did a lot of work from the employee side. This is the safety committee, and so just wanted to point out that we do have a safety committee that's very active, meeting monthly. I do want to point out Mary, she's in the center in the front, Mary Jones, and she is the executive assistant for Joe and does a lot of the legwork for property and liability and keeps us on. She does a lot of work on the safety committee as well. And so, again, just with the last year, in addition to the review, we looked at property liability. Mary went around with Midwest Public Risk twice to do reviews of the property that we have. They did safety walkthroughs. We did an evaluation of workers' compensation. We're looking at the safety program, which is the safety handbook. We ended up also looking at some of the different high-risk areas that we had, trends, patterns, and we did education on those. We also saw where we could spend some of the money that we had allocated in NPR in an account that we had, and ended up spending that on backup cameras for trucks in parks that were older that didn't have a backup camera to reduce accidents there, and other things like installation of glass in the police department, lifting equipment, and things like that. So whatever we saw, we addressed during the review. We also saw that there were educational opportunities for new employees, some CPR classes, the life safety around the buildings with the fire extinguishers, active shooter drills, and those kinds of things. And then now a newsletter goes out. Every time there's a safety committee, that information is summarized and sent to supervisors so they can take action. So everything we've done in the last year can only be used to enhance what we do going forward, but a lot of work has gone on in the last year. I just want to point that out because the safety committee did a great job. And I'm gonna turn it over to Casey for her part.
Thank you, Carla. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about property liability and cybersecurity. Like Carla said, over the last year, city staff, and I, I do want to mention Mary again. She's been incredible in walking around with NPR to all the different sites and updating all of our assets. As you can see, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five, we had a forty-five percent increase in our assets, or forty-two million dollars. A lot of that is due to actually putting those assets on the schedule. I don't know the last time that was done, so really props to Mary. She was great in getting this done. That did raise our premium, however, but at least we're accurate, and that's what we're looking for is accuracy. So hats off to Mary again for that. So what kind of coverage do we have? Property. So it covers obviously our property, anything that damages our property that's not wind or hail, that's not earthquake or flood. So we've got inland marine and any kind of motor vehicle damage that we have. Under liability, general liability, which would cover any kind of accidents that occur on our property. Auto liability covers injury to others and, and their property. Sewer liability are anything that happens to our customers, sewer. We've got liability insurance to cover that. Crime specifically addresses financial crimes, I hate to say that, such as employee dishonesty, fraud, and theft, but that is incredibly important for us to have. Any law enforcement liability, public official liability protects the decisions that you guys are making in office, and employment liability, including wrongful, wrongful termination suits. Uh, so from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five, our five-year average and loss ratio was nineteen-point-eight percent. That's actually a pretty good percentage to have, so we've done really well. You do see in twenty-one to twenty-two, a pretty significant loss ratio of sixty-five percent. There were some pretty big property claims those years, some injury claims, and some employment claims as well. So now we want to talk about the premiums. Up here, you'll see under liability, we've got general liability, and the biggest things that we looked at were, one, the premiums and the deductibles. So under liability, currently with NPR, our deductibles are ten-thousand. We did look at, I would say, close to twenty-two. Brown and Brown looked at close to twenty-two other companies that could potentially insure us. A lot of them... A lot of them didn't want to even submit, uh, a quote because we are a municipality. That's, that's pretty normal for that to happen. So this is just one company that we got back for liability and property. And for liability, uh, for the deductibles are better for, with a different company, but under property, um, almost all of them are better, uh, currently with M. P. R. And when you look at like the, the flood, ninety thousand dollars, that's a pretty huge, uh, difference in the deductible when it comes to the property. So I'll let you kind of take a glance at those real quick and then I'll move on to the next slide.
Casey?
Yes.
What's the sum of the difference there? I said, you know what I mean? Total, like from a totality perspective?
In the deductibles?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it really just depends on what the claim is. We do have a sum of the premiums on the next page.
Well, I'm just saying if we're looking at, you know, differences, I'm just curious how big that difference from the one to the other is from a total perspective, because I can see them, I mean, I guess I can do the math real quick, but.
There's no real way to, to, to get a total unless you know how many events you're going to have, right? So each deductible is based on per event that you have to file a claim. And so, um, the, one good way to look at it is just to say, okay, which are the most likely types of events? Um, and then how much do those cost? Um, and then, you know what I mean? It's, there's, there's really not a way for us to say, here's a total of what it's going to cost us, because we have no idea how many claims we're going to have.
Yeah, maybe I'm not.
I'll give you an example. In, in twenty-nineteen, um, we had a pretty big wind and hail claim. It was over three hundred thousand dollars. So currently, our wind and hail is fifty. With a new company, it would be a hundred. I'm going to go to the next slide and, and there's actually two. So additional cost with liability is twenty-six thousand. If we go to a different company, the savings with property is thirty-seven hundred. So you can look at the numbers with one wind and hail claim. The company that we are currently with makes sense to stay with, if that helps to answer your question. And that's with just one claim.
Okay. I thank you. I jumped the gun apparently.
No, you're okay.
You were bringing forward exactly kind of what I was thinking. Okay.
Yep. Any other questions regarding these numbers on the screen? And this was actually the, we had, I think, three different, um, coverages that we could look at and this was the best deductible that this other company offered. So we tried to do, uh, the best apples-to-apples comparison that we could. So again, the additional cost, um, net was twenty-two-five-sixty-eight. Of course, we've got lower deductibles for liability, uh, with the other company, higher deductibles for property with the other company. We also didn't mention in that savings of twenty-two-five-sixty-eight, uh, we do receive a safety credit at the end of the year with the current company that we are with. Um, and I believe this past year it was close to nineteen thousand. Usually it's around twenty thousand, so if you throw that twenty in there, you've got about forty-two thousand in savings, um, with our current company. Another challenge that we had, um, our current company, yes?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm.
Maybe you're coming to it, but, uh, I haven't heard you discuss cyber and what goes in with the cyber insurance.
Yep. I'm not, I'm not quite there yet.
You know, he jumped the gun, so I have to.
That's okay. No worries at all. Um, so one of the other challenges that we had, uh, our current company will not separate property liability. The new companies that we looked at, one wanted work comp and liability together, will not separate that out, and then we had property. So Carla will talk about this here in just a little bit. Uh, work comp, we were able to go out and just look at work comp by itself if we kept a property liability with M. P. R., which the savings you saw on the board are, are probably the smart thing to do. And then we were able to go out and look at work comp on its own. And I'm going to talk about cyber real quick. The cyber policy is the same. So it was twenty-two thousand, uh, with M. P. R. and they actually offer much better coverage than the other company that we looked at. So it wasn't, it really wasn't a discussion that we were going to have because it's a no-brainer to stay with M. P. R. when it comes to cybersecurity. The coverage is, uh, top-notch with them, so. And with that, we're going to move into workers' compensation. Unless there's any more questions on property liability.
I just want to understand that last piece of them combining them.
Yep.
So the other company was basically saying that we had to have workers' comp tied in with.
With liability, correct. They would not separate them. So what our, uh, broker did, they combined two companies. So we had one company that, uh, had work comp and liability and then the other company was providing a quote for property. Property is better with M. P. R. M. P. R. will not split property liability, but we can split off work comp. So financially and coverage-wise, the smartest thing to do was, in, in our minds, was to give you the quote for M. P. R. with property and liability and then separate out work comp and look at, um, other companies that could provide us the insurance there.
Okay. I might have work comp question, but I'll, I'll hold on.
Okay.
I don't want to jump the gun again.
Okay.
Thanks, Casey. With work comp, I think it's a little bit easier because when we did go back out and look at it, the, um, numbers were set specifically from the city of Belton instead of a pool. And so this is the increase in our payroll, just to give you an idea of that, fifty-seven percent increase over the last five years in payroll. Our work comp loss ratio is, on a five-year average, twenty-five-point-six. That first dark line is about forty-four percent. That's generally what, um, people have as their work comp loss ratio, but the higher line, sixty-five percent, is actually what is, um, good. So we're doing forty percent better in work comp than the pool, the goal, and then for, um, property liability, the difference there was thirty percent better. So we are doing very well in both of those over a long period of time. And so when we looked at the initial company, we were excited because they could save us two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars in work comp per year. But then when we said it's a package deal, all or nothing, and we looked outside, we dug a little deeper and, uh, the new company that we have been looking at strongly, just as work comp, they've been in business for thirty years, um, have similar services. It's something I've been wanting for a while too, is they also offer online, so I can play with the details, looks at trends, analysis, um, claims, history, all of that. Um, they have a return to work program, so some of them feel like enhancements. Um, and you can see the bottom line after we looked specifically at the city of Belton and the codes for us, the savings with that new company is three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. So it's significant. Um, so listed here is the property liability and the total work comp savings. With that, looking at next steps, unless you have any questions about work comp specifically?
No, you answered. I was, you answered them. I was curious how that combined rate was going to, I'm assuming it was going to be good, right? Like, which it was, but you found better, so.
Yeah, exactly.
You answered the question.
Yeah, so, um, if, you know, we want to have feedback discussion, but with council, the deadline, the timeframes for Midwest Public Risk, because we do have to give them notice by June first, uh, the effective date of the new year is July first, and so we could move forward with Midwest, Midwest Public Risk for property liability, cybersecurity and workers' compensation through MEM or Supervisor, which is the company I was referring to. And then the formal recommendation after this discussion would be brought to our next meeting. So other questions?
Would that come to the next meeting on a double read?
It's a resolution. Yeah, it's a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, and so just to look at the, Casey, do you have something?
It is a resolution, but we would like almost definitive feedback from you tonight so that we know what resolution to bring back to you, May twenty-seventh.
Okay, so if I could say the headlines, um, kind of piecing together our coverage for all those, um, different things is a premium savings of just under four-hundred-thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, the liability limits, nothing notable there, like there is no change from what coverage we currently carry?
Correct.
Great. Good job.
Sounds like a plan.
I know you didn't bring it up, but I'm going to bring it up anyways. The one, one bid that was all or nothing, can you talk about that a little bit?
On the bid that was all or nothing? Tell me more about what you want to hear.
Coverage and deductibles and savings if there was.
Yeah, so with that, um, I think essentially when we reviewed it, the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand would have been the work comp savings, so going to another company would be about fifty-six, fifty-eight thousand dollars more with the new work comp comfort or company. I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that from property liability?
Yeah, um, I'm trying to go back because these numbers are for M. P. R. and MEM, but when we first looked at this, um, I believe the total savings, and the savings was only on the work comp side in the all or nothing. If we were to go, I'll just say the companies, Travelers and Chubb were the two companies that, uh, are the all or nothing that Brown and Brown brought to us. But with that, those deductibles are so high that in my financial mind, I'm taking that savings and I'm putting it back for the, the ca, in, in the case of flood or wind or hail and that hundred thousand. And I think there was actually at one point a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deductible? Two-hundred-and-fifty. So then the savings was, so is that the one? I think that's what you're, you're talking about. The deductibles are just, they eat up the premium savings.
If I may, yeah, we're essentially just to kind of summarize, yes, if we went with Travelers and Chubb, we would see a savings, um, not over what was presented, but we would see savings over M. P. R. But that potential savings could be eaten up on one claim, uh, assuming that there is a claim. And if there were multiple claims, then, then we'd be definitely in the red. Um, whereas if we, the status quo, we, we're capped with those, with those deductibles. And so we, you know, if we're multiple claims, then we're definitely ahead, sticking with where we are, if that makes any sense.
But playing devil's advocate, if we didn't have any claims, we would have a significant savings.
Right.
That we could put aside for any day.
Sure. If, but, but because we felt we were able to find another workers' compensation company that actually gives us a better rate.
Right.
Than the one that if we would have, if we would have moved, then we actually get a larger savings if we go with that company when workers' comp and then the, and the property liability is pretty much even Steven on, on the premium. And then it's just a matter of what's the better deductible.
Yeah, the work comp again is the, it was where the savings is and I think it was too, Carla, correct me if I'm wrong, the all or nothing to move everything to Travelers and Chubb was two-eighty-eight, maybe? But leaving, yeah, that was all work comp. But leaving, uh, property liability where it is and just moving work comp to this other company, well, you saw, now it's gone because Andrew's taken it down, but it was right under four-hundred, so. Yes.
Just to add one thing too, with property and liability, with them being two separate buckets, um, when there's a claim, that's a car accident claim as well, there's a car accident, which could be property, but it could also be liability. So if we broke those apart, we would be working with two separate companies on the same claim and trying to resolve it using potentially two separate attorneys, approvals, not approvals. So keeping those together made sense in this instance as well.
Can you email that? I had trouble seeing those slides. Can you email them out to us? Anybody else? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, do you have your direction?
No, we would like some direction, please, on which way to go. Because we do want to bring a resolution back, the right resolution back.
I think the recommendation that you made is where we go.
So M. P. R., P. N. L., MEM, work comp?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Item.
Quickly, just real quick. If we could ever have those things that are up on this board on our computers, that would really help all of us who are, yeah, I mean, because it's, it's difficult to see. I mean, even if, when you highlight them in color, if that could just be something that we have, that would be awesome.
We will email them to you from now on.
No, I don't, no, I didn't even mind on that, but if we just had them on our computer screens when we're doing a meeting, that would be just.
Yep, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
All right, item two, Blue Shield Program.
The, uh, Blue Shield Program for Missouri is about enhancing, uh, public safety and empowering communities. It was initiated, initiated by Governor Mike Kehoe, uh, through an executive order twenty-five dash oh-three on January thirteenth of this year. And so it is about enhancing, uh, public safety, supporting law enforcement, building community partnerships, and it's administered by the, the Missouri Department of Public Safety. And that is the Blue Shield logo. And a lot of communities in and around Kansas City and, uh, the state, um, I've started to get these certifications. I believe I heard, uh, last week that we are up to fifty in the state of Missouri so far. Executive Order twenty-five oh-three recognizes that local governments, um, are dedicated to effective law enforcement and community safety. It's a designation that highlights initiatives, enhancing public safety, strengthening the support of law enforcement and building lasting partnerships within the community. Uh, the issuance of the Blue Shield designation enables law enforcement agencies to have greater access. The governor is setting aside ten million dollars in funds, uh, to be administered by the Department of Public Safety, uh, for grants, uh, for equipment, training, um, and that should be coming in the budget. I heard that, uh, he's not making any type of deals in regards to that in his budget and that should be, um, more information should be coming out in July. The grant program and funding is currently being established, like I, like I said, and , uh, it's going to be in the, uh, fiscal twenty-twenty-six budget. Uh, to achieve the Blue Shield designation, local governments must meet criteria that demonstrate their ongoing commitment to comprehensive and sustainable programs to fight crime and to promote, uh, safer communities. And as you're going to see, uh, we already are doing lots, uh, many of these things, if not all of them already. Number one, the local government, governing body has to pass a resolution demonstrating its commitment to public safety and a commitment to reducing violent crime within its jurisdiction. And at the next city council meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, we'll have a proposed resolution for you to look at. Local governments, number two, um, have made extraordinary investments in public safety, yeah, over the course of the last five years, and I've made a short list of just some of those. Uh, we manage the, uh, public safety sales tax. It was in, uh, initiated in twenty-eighteen, but yearly, we are equipping police officers and training police officers and getting more police officers on the street because of that. And since, uh, twenty-twenty-one, there's been a commitment to training funds for police officers. We've increased the training budget significantly. You authorized in twenty-twenty-two a detective to be assigned to the FBI, uh, forensics, uh, crime laboratory. That's a person that actually goes in and looks at computers and digital devices and recovers evidence to prosecute cases. And we've made a number of, um, substantial number of cases that we've prosecuted successfully because of it. You've authorized us to use the VAWA grant in twenty-twenty-three to obtain a domestic violence, sexual assault, uh, detective. And, uh, we authorized, you also authorized from the Missouri Department of Mental Health last year, uh, the adding of a mental health co-responder. In twenty-twenty-three, you purchased a Lingco Bearcat tactical vehicle for us, armored car, uh, that's used for, um, tactical operations. And then you have expanded the flock, uh, plate reader system totaling thirteen locations and we just had that go through at the last meeting. And then finally, um, the purchase of the fifty-seven Motorola portable radios for over three-hundred, almost three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we just did. Number three, the community has an active community policing initiatives that are in place and we park, partner with local, uh, stakeholders. Uh, this is not a comprehensive list, but just some of them. Belton School District. Belton School District, Heart and Hand, Belton Regional Medical Center, Missouri Department, Missouri Probation and Parole, the Belton Branch, Hope Haven, Belray Neighborhood Crime Watch, Compass Mental Health, Belton Cares, Belton Educational Foundation, Belton Chamber of Commerce, U-Matter Belton, and the West Belton Neighborhood Crime Watch. These are all things that we do currently. Number four, local government law enforcement agency has a police officer, has a police officer recruitment and retention program. The city of Belton has invested in a competitive salaries and hired a recruitment expert who has retooled the entire recruitment and hiring process, and we've been very successful bringing people on. The local government has demonstrated effectiveness in reducing crime and created innovative programs that attempt to reduce crime. We're involved in the Vibrant Communities Initiative, which is a University of Washington research project that's been extended to Kansas City, and we are partnering with retail loss prevention to target career theft suspects in groups. Number six, local government law enforcement agency participates in regional anti-crime task forces. We were a part of that FBI Regional Forensic Crime Laboratory. We also have a member, a part-time member of the FBI Human Trafficking Task Force. We've made another number of cases off of that last year. And our investigations unit is also involved in that, is the one that's involved with the Vibrant Communities Initiative. Number seven was law enforcement, I'm sorry, number eight, local government agency is in compliance with the following statutes. We do submit UCR information every year. We've been doing that ever since it was established for agencies. We have mandatory reporting that we do on all intoxication-related traffic offenses, excuse me, and we also adhere to basic training and minimum standards. And then reporting of annual racial profiling data, we do that regularly. We also have a written policy for recording custodial interrogations for certain types of cases, which is state law. And we also report use of force incident to the state. It's all stuff we already do. Number nine, local governments must maintain eligibility on an annual basis, and we will do that, and we keep that reporting up. And then after local governments receive the Blue Shield designation, we have to provide that data to DPS on an annual basis. And so the city of Belton, we're hoping is going to join because we are engaged in a mission for safer communities, and by achieving Blue Shield designation, we're going to unlock some opportunities for grant funding to expand that. Is there any questions?
Question, go ahead.
Do we have a domestic violence detective? Because didn't we not have one there for a while?
We were without one, and we have Detective Raven Morris, who's been appointed. She's been in her position for about a week and a half.
Okay.
So it sounds like the only thing that we need to do and that we're not already currently doing is just bring forward a resolution?
Yes, and then there's an application process, and then we'll put in the information. But I'm fairly certain we meet all the requirements, if not exceed them.
And I guess, is there anything in particular, so let's say we are successful in, you know, obtaining the money, is there anything specific that we are looking to target? And I don't know, this may be a Joe question as well, but is there anything specific we're looking to target with that, with those funds?
I think that it's been very clear in the communications with the city council that we are making inroads to reduce theft, retail theft, theft from neighborhoods, vehicles, and other types of crimes like that. Our commitment to domestic violence and sexual assaults is directly tied to trying to impact homicides and those types of assaults, and we've seen improvements in those statistics. I think that this is a continuing conversation with the city council and the community about where they want us. But I think that when we look at the green opportunities, I think there's several different areas that I would be interested in. We would eventually like to turn a full-time person over to the FBI Human Trafficking Task Force. They also do child porn cases, which we already know that those reports that we get, there's a number of cases that we've uncovered in the last several years that we've been very public about in the media, and we know that that's something that we want to prevent in the future.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Just for clarification, just in case people don't know, when you reference VAWA, that's the Violence Against Women Act, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm so used to speaking in acronyms.
No, I think we all understood it, but just in case those watching online weren't aware. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Item three, Creekstone and Autumn Ridge.
Yep, the planning commission approved the final development plan for Creekstone and Autumn Ridge last Tuesday, May 6th, and they recommended approval of the final plat, which will be presented to city council on May 27th. Along with that, there will be an ordinance vacating the former Autumn Ridge Office Park final plat, which was recorded in 2008 at the southwest corner of Silver Maple and South Mullen Road. Since that was never developed, we're officially going to just request the vacation of that so that is clear that that final plat is no longer in existence. We'll also have the Development Maintenance Agreement that outlines the phasing requirements for buildings and amenities for the apartments, maintenance of common open spaces, and access to community amenities. The developer stated that they're hoping to get started with this project this summer.
Any questions? Hearing none. Number four, wayfinding signage.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Wanted to just give a quick kind of overview of the wayfinding signage program, also as we start our phase two of the wayfinding signage. Just as a quick timeline, this was actually a project that was started, I think even before I started with the city of Belton. Jordan Lee in Economic Development, as well as Jen Fernandez, as the city planner in community development, started the project, putting some of the initial designs together. And part of that included developing some points of interest, as well as looking at some of the most traveled routes in the city, and then also putting together kind of areas of priority or focus. And I did print off some of these maps, and if they're still difficult to see kind of in the presentation, I'm happy to send the actual maps out, kind of to get as large as we can. Since I started, we took the program to the Tourism Council, the newly formed Tourism Council, and started asking them and engaging them in some conversation about, so based on the points of interest throughout the community, what did we want to rank as our priorities? What did we want to see in terms of if we were putting together wayfinding signage or a wayfinding signage program, where did we want to start? Just because it would be almost impossible, both from a funding standpoint, as well as just, you know, as we discovered the number of points of interest across the city, it'd be impossible for us to sign everything. And so one of the areas that they had us focus on was really getting people originally in phase one, driving them and focusing them to downtown, to Main Street, and then looking at getting them to some of our larger parks. Once we were able to get some priorities in place through the Tourism Commission, we brought that to council as kind of an initial project. We started working with some different sign fabricators in the area because we knew there were going to be some requirements in terms of the materials. We wanted to make sure that, one, they're going to last, just given the weather that we have here in the Midwest, but also we wanted to make sure that maybe if they got hit by a car, you know, that they had shear bolts that were going to be at the base of them, but also that they were just going to be, again, stand up to the sun, the weather, and that they were going to be recognizable. And so we worked with a couple different sign fabricators to make sure that we had the right materials, that when we put this out for an RFP bid, that we had the right specs in that RFP, and we luckily were able to get a local vendor who was interested in the project and was able to get us through phase one. So phase one on the map here, those are going to be the orange dots. Those were replacing the old kind of purple and yellow signs, I think directed folks to the old, to the farmer's market. Those were kind of in much-needed repair, and so that seemed like a natural spot for the Tourism Council to, you know, take on first, tackle first, and replace. And so those became our first four signs that we've installed, and hopefully you've seen those as you've been driving around. And so now here in the new fiscal year, we're going to be moving on to our second phase, which will be the five signs that are in green. And I want to talk a little bit about, we'd like to add to that a little bit and get some council direction on adding to that, but that's going to be our second phase, knowing that then as we go forward in future budget years, that we'll be adding other phases as we also bring on, you know, some more park amenities, especially at Cleveland Lake and elsewhere that we want to add some kind of wayfinding signage to. This was the initial sign package designed by Jenna that we kind of worked with. The one sign that we're working with right now, that far-left directional sign, that's really the model that we've used for the current directional signage, the wayfinding signage. We have some other levels of signage, so district signage and large monument and small monument signage. That small monument signage, we'll kind of talk about here in a little bit, but our goal was, and kind of as we talked about this through community development, as well as through the Tourism, the Tourism Council, was we know that there are going to be different spots throughout the community that, one, we wanted to use our new branding, we wanted to use our new branding very effectively through the new signage, and we wanted to be able to tie all of our signage together. So whether we're using directional signage or a wayfinding program, or if we're designating some districts, some areas, whether it's a 58 Shopping District or North Scott, kind of small business district, but we also wanted to look at large monument signage, things that we could put in the medians as, you know, kind of welcome signage into the community. We wanted to be able to have kind of a base design that we could work from, as well as smaller monument signs that we have some ideas on that we could place kind of in smaller regional areas. So as I mentioned before, we had phase one and phase two. The orange dots are our phase one. Those are the signs that have currently been installed. Phase two, those will be the signs that will begin the RFP process this summer. The two signs, the pointing northwest and the pointing southeast, those will be, I believe those are the ones, seven and eight, that are going to be going right off of I-49, kind of a high-visibility area that I think will benefit greatly from. And then the others, number five and six, those will be on the north side off 155th Street. We've really intentionally, I think, as you can kind of see in the dots on our phase two, tried to keep them as, really as close as we could to areas that, you know, we have right of way in, that we're able to utilize and keep those signs in, kind of in the Belton right of way. And then the last area I wanted to talk about is kind of our phase two of the signage area is, I'm sure some of you have noticed that the sign that was at the corner of Main and Cedar got damaged sometime over the winter. It did have to come down because unfortunately, the wood that was holding it up had been rotted out. And so here recently, Public Works graciously was able to go out and put some landscaping in those flower beds there. But one of the things that we're looking at is a possible replacement for that, and so what we're looking to do is to use, utilize that small monument sign to where we could mark the beginning of Main Street, right at a location where we get a lot of traffic coming down Cedar. Our hope is, really, we're looking at more the one on the right, just because as the, as some of that landscaping got planted, what we realized is, when we looked at the original design for the monument sign, if we were to have any kind of landscaping, the signage and the wording would be obscured by that landscaping, and so we tried to raise it up a little bit. Also, we wanted to use the new logo as much as possible, and so our hope is that we'd be able to put out a bid that included that small monument B on both corners, so both those planter beds, so that we could create kind of a nice bookend entry feature to that end of Main Street as her folks are coming down. That's really kind of the end of my presentation on what we're working on right now and what we're looking to do here this summer for an RFP. Happy to answer any questions about the wayfinding program. Council has allocated about $20,000 for this next round, you know, happy to kind of take any input.
Go ahead.
All right, you looked at me first.
He's always first.
I don't have to be first, for the record. One of the things that, actually, Councilmember Davidson brought up that I thought was a good idea, because I also, is potentially considering putting mileage on there, like how far we are away from that particular POI, because I'm not saying we put them in bad locations, not saying that at all, but some of the locations, it does not become apparent, like, it's not like abundantly intuitive as to where this is, where I'm going. And so I think if we had mileage markers, it would greatly clear that up. So if it said, you know, Main Street, half a mile, or 200 feet, or whatever, right, it would be a little more clear, if that makes sense. And again, I'm not saying that bad placement or anything of that, I think it's just that it's, for me even, it's, you know, I wasn't 100% clear. So that's just something to consider. I don't know if we can go backwards now that we have these ones up, if we can just simply repaint, or how complicated or simple that may be.
One of the, one of the nice things about, so KC Custom Signs is who we use that's located here in town, so each of the slats, those can be removed. And so if we wanted to re-slat some of the signs, you know, as we kind of looked at, some of them, I think you'll notice, like, we didn't use the four full locations. We could add to those or remove those slats if necessary, because I think in one of them, even like the one that we do have installed, does say, over by the high school, does say Cleveland Lake, at some point, we're going to want to re-slat that as construction starts on and officially naming that, you know, the Dryden Arboretum, and then use the official name for that park. And so it's certainly possible. One of the things I do want to point out, though, and kind of the challenge of putting mile markers on here, while not impossible, we do kind of have an economy of word lettering space, and so we don't want to make the lettering too small, that folks wouldn't be able to see it from their vehicle, and as you can kind of see in some of these areas, we do kind of bump right up against the.
Well, maybe there's, maybe there's another solution. That doesn't have to be the solution. I just thought that was a good idea, we had talked about it, and I just thought, oh, man, yeah, that would potentially clear it up for me. So I don't know, maybe there's another way, I just, I'm just trying to think of possibilities. I'll leave that to you. And the only other thing is, I believe that parks would potentially be interested in some of these, obviously, I know they were listed as POIs, but, and if I remember correctly, that we had already talked about that, but just wanted to, you know, I guess, point it out that we should make sure that we're, you know, continuing to work with those, that park board as we look at these.
And we have park staff, part of the Tourism Council as well, and so we know that as this project continues to go forward, and Brian and I talk an awful lot, especially, especially when the bill came due for some of the signage, that kind of how we can continue to cooperate on that.
And then, well, actually, I'll, go ahead, James.
Maybe just the far ones for those people like Councilmember McCallum, that, you know, transplant, doesn't know the town that well, you know? Help him out and put mileage for the ones that are very far away. If it's an immediate right, that kind of makes it easier. Oh.
Hold on, hold on, I've got a list. You're up.
Okay. I like the one that you come off commercial, because I've always been working on the railroad, and when I come home that way, it's just too short for me, Mike. When I pull up, I can't see the oncoming cars. If we could just raise it a little bit taller, so I could see through legs.
Okay.
It's difficult to see around when you're coming off commercial onto Y.
Okay.
Just, you know, and I come home that way regularly, so that's just an idea.
That's okay.
Really? All that for nothing? Go ahead, Patty.
I didn't have any.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So just real quick, some of it also get cleared up with some of the signs. So for example, if we have a monument sign at the corner of Main Street, the sign coming to Main Street, right, it would actually be very clear. So some of the, so it doesn't have to be mileage markers, just again, I thought, I thought it was a good idea that potentially would help, but open to whatever, right?
Absolutely.
I like the signs, and I like how it uses the new city branding. It's cohesive, it's fresh. I do have one suggestion for sign number two, where it points to Wallace Park. I think instead of indicating to people it's to the left, it would be better to point them straight. Do you know what I mean? I've gotten some feedback that that particular arrow is confusing, and now I know it means like a new slat would have to go in.
When we, so, and I appreciate that feedback, because as I've been driving them, what I took that, when I looked at that, especially where that sign is located, you know, there is no left-hand turn until you get to the intersection where you actually make that left-hand turn, but I do know we're going to possibly have future development in that area where another road may be cut in, and so that slat should probably be replaced here in the phase two as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
One, you said on Main Street, you're going to put a monument on either side?
Yes, so the plan would be with council's kind of feedback here, that we would use that small monument B, would go in each of those planter beds. Those are about six feet tall, yeah, not, probably not that wide.
Yeah, so my idea for an arch got shot down, huh?
So the arch, I think would be much more, much more appropriate, maybe further down towards the commercial core of the district.
Okay.
But definitely.
I'll start a fundraiser immediately.
I like the, I like the new landscaping, too, that they look really nice and tidy. that's a big improvement.
Anybody else? Everybody okay with?
Yeah.
Letter B? Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item L, I would motion to enter an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one-point-one pertaining to leasing, purchase, sell real estate according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one-point-two, pertaining to negotiated contracts according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one-point-two pertaining to individual identifiable personal records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment according to Missouri State Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one-point-one-three, and the record be closed and the meeting adjourned from there.
What is that?
Second.
Motion to the second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.